Hey, Alan.
Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on April one, twenty, twenty-five, ten a.m., Commissioners' courtroom in the Brazos County Administration Building, two hundred South Texas Avenue, Suite one oh six. First item on the agenda is invocation, pledge of allegiance to U.S. Texas flag, Mr. Nettles Alito.
Lord, thank you for the opportunity to come before you today, pray that your wisdom and guidance be upon us. We also want to take the opportunity to thank you for the life and service of Deputy Director of Juvenile Services, Joel Hines, and pray that you would be with him and with his family as they mourn his loss, as we all do. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is a call for citizens' input and our concerns, and we've got two, I believe, Kathy Beans.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I wasn't going to speak today, but I was very interested in the previous meeting we just finished up, and I want to commend you for your efforts towards transparency. I think everybody needs that. And Commissioner Watson, you're right, we are uninformed citizenry, and a lot of that's our fault, but a lot of it is the Commissioners' Court as well. My experience over the past two, two and a half years of attending weekly court sessions has been frustrating in the beginning because I was unaware of how the agenda worked and the hyperlinks, and how I could investigate what was being voted on, and so people who come to the court and don't know the process, and they pick up the agenda when they walk in, in the door, they don't know what you're voting on, and there's been, in the last two and a half years, very little conversation about what you're voting on. It's just pretty much a yay or an aye. And so I think there needs to be an opportunity for people to learn about how the agenda works, that it's released on Fridays, that the hyperlinks give all the information necessary to ask questions at the podium. And I know I've been pretty rough on some of you in this court, and a lot of it is because I'm inexperienced and I don't know how it works. I've never had a government job. I've only worked in the private sector. And whenever I've applied for a job, I've always tried to learn everything I can about what would be expected of me, and to get up to speed on projects that were underway that I hadn't even taken on the responsibility for, so that when I, if I was to be hired, I would know where that project was and what was the background, and I'd be up to speed. But that doesn't seem to be the case here, because when we ask you questions in court about things you're voting on, it, it seems pretty evident that you have, that many of you don't ask questions before court session. So that makes me wonder how well-informed you are, and I understand there's all these different departments, and they've been great. There's a particular department here that has entertained my questions without any difficulty. It was awesome, because from my perspective, a lot of times, especially in August, when the budget comes up, and we're all upset about the tax increases, and we all wonder, well, why, how did this all happen? It seems like it's almost like Santa Claus time. Maybe all these departments are asking for their bells and whistles, and they're being approved for it. But that's not the case, and I wouldn't have known that if, if your employees were not meeting with me and giving me the transparency. But that's on a personal basis, not on a countywide basis. So I don't know how you can improve on that, but a lot of the perspective from my seat here has been not seeing transparency in how this works. I would like to see more questions asked and discussion of things that you're voting on, and I'd like to think that citizens have an opportunity to push back. You know, sometimes you think a project is going to be great for the county. The East Loop people are here every week talking about that project, but, and there's, you go out and you're interviewed on the television about your perspective from the Commissioners' stand, but the East Loop people don't have that same opportunity, and it doesn't feel like they have, you're actually considering their perspective. And so that's a lack of transparency in my mind. So that's just my perspective from this morning's meeting. Again, I really appreciate that you're talking about these things. I don't know how it'll come to pass, but I think there needs to be more discussion in this court every Tuesday. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Chris Barnes.
My name's Chris Barnes. I spoke, I think, almost everybody up here knows me. My wife and I have been residents of Brazos County for more than forty years. I am here to speak this morning about the proposed East Loop. I'm going to start with a little bit of background. We moved to Bryan College Station area in nineteen eighty-three after I finished a three-year enlistment with United States Navy. I was in San Diego during that time. We came to this community because I was enrolled at Texas A&amp;M. While I was enrolled at Texas A&amp;M, I continued to serve the U.S. Navy in the Navy Reserves. I drilled once a, a month, first in Waco, and then mostly in Austin. There wasn't a reserve unit here in Bryan College Station at the time for the Navy. I graduated from A&amp;M in nineteen eighty-seven with two degrees, one in accounting, one in business, excuse me, business analysis, and I continued to serve the Navy Reserves until nineteen eighty-nine. I mention this because I've heard many developers and city planners, and some of you sometimes, talk about Bryan College Station becoming the next Austin. When I graduated, I received offers mostly from companies in Dallas, Houston, and specifically Austin. I rejected them because I didn't want to live in an urban environment like that. Instead, I took a job offer at a fairly significantly lower salary from Texas A&amp;M so we could remain here in Bryan College Station. I did this because we saw the value of raising my family. My first daughter was born in nineteen eighty-seven, in a rural community with small-town values. That's what I saw Bryan College Station as, a small-town community with rural values. Even though we lived in town, we lived over by Villa Maria and, I forgot the name of the, forgive me, I didn't write that part down. Even though we lived in town, because the town was a rural community, the people that owned property outside of the city limits gave us value, because it still presented the whole community and air, aura of being a rural community. That means there's value to people who live in town for having rural undeveloped areas. Those, that value doesn't show up on tax rolls. It doesn't show up in real estate values. But it's something that I think gets ignored when we talk about road projects and turning Bryan College Station into the next Austin. That's something we will lose, and it's, it's the value that makes this community worth living in. I had to cut down what I'm talking about because I knew I was going to run out of time. My dad used to tell me that it doesn't do any good to just complain. If you complain, you need to try to come up with a solution of your own. I have a couple of things written down, and I'm probably going to have to come back next week to finish. First one is the term "study" has been thrown around quite a bit, both by people on this court, John Polster, Representative Quiddity, and by people who have spoken against the East Loop. I think we need to be specific when we use the word "study." The word "study" being conducted by Quiddity is a feasibility study of proposed routes that are already on a map. Those of us on the No East Loop Council are in favor of a traffic study. In our research, a traffic study...
Already?
Oh, wow. I'll be back next week.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that was the last for number two. We will move to number three, and that's a presentation and discussions, presentation by Alan Day, General Manager of Brazos Valley GCD, on the Angel Report, Brazos Valley Groundwater Conservation District. Alan.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Alan.
And Judge. I appreciate the opportunity to come back again this year and give you an update on what's gone on in groundwater. There's a lot of talk about groundwater of late. I saw it in the Eagle, saw it on KBTX. Everybody's interested in groundwater. So we're going to tell you what happened in 2024. It's been a very busy year in 2024, and going to be even busier probably in 2025. So if you have questions, we go along, don't hesitate to stop and ask, okay? All right, we'll start off and make sure that is the first slide. On. There we go. Okay. Go back one. Boy, this thing doesn't want to work very well. There we go. Okay. So during 2024, we permit water wells for non-exempt purposes, meaning those wells that are not for a domestic or livestock use. We had eight wells this past year that received non-exempt wells, four for agriculture, three for industrial use, and one that was a multiple-use well for agricultural and industrial, for a total of two thousand seven hundred and sixty acre-feet permitted. Compared to 2023, where we had a hundred and four permits, and we issued about two hundred thousand acre-feet, because we had a rule change in 2023, and when you have a rule change, when it deals with spacing between wells, and people were thinking that they needed to have permits, it's like when they changed ordinances. People are already planning, they came, we had a landslide of permits in 2023, all, not all, most of that happening in the Simsboro, which is what Bryan College Station, Texas A&amp;M, Welborn, Wixson, and everyone pretty much uses Simsboro. So we had a much reduced permitting year in, for all aquifers. Permits by aquifer, you can see of that twenty-seven sixty, two thousand and sixty was the Brazos River alluvium wells, which is primarily used for agricultural irrigation purposes, whether it's out in the Robertson County area or down in that Milken bottom. So two thousand and sixty there, one permit in the Calvert Bluff, and one in the Spartan, and one down in the Yawat Jackson, which is at land surface here in Bryan College Station. Boy, this really doesn't want to work. Okay, why don't you just advance it? That'd be good. Metered production was down this year compared to past, in 2022 and 2023, we had seriously dry summers, so our production was way up, especially from the Simsboro aquifer. You can see here that, and I'm going to talk specifically on that one, Simsboro was down slightly. We didn't have, we had very little agricultural pumping during 2024 from the Simsboro. As a matter of fact, just pretty much very little throughout the year from any, any aquifer. But the, the total amount of water produced during 2024 was slightly reduced from the previous year in 2023. Okay, go ahead. Here's our metered production by category. So there's our five categories, agricultural, municipal, public water supply, industrial and commercial, and steam-electric. Agricultural and steam-electric are set at a much lower rate of fees, and we have five steam-electric permits for the two big power plants up in Robertson County. You can see they produce a little over fifty-one hundred acre-feet. Agricultural total with all aquifers is only twenty-one hundred acre-feet. Rest of that came from municipal rural water supply and industrial, commercial. Okay? Here's the fees by category. I won't go through each one of those, but you can see that the lion's share of our budget comes from municipal rural water supply and commercial. That's the highest rate that's paid, and that's where the lion's share of the money that we are able to fund the district on, for a total of eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars that will be collected on fees from 2024. And I might mention, we've, we're in the process of collecting those 2024 fees now. We've been in arrears, one year in arrears, and in 2025, we have changed that. We're going to get these 2024 fees collected, and we're already starting to collect 2025 fees in real time, based on permitted amounts, not based on actual production. We're still requiring everybody with a permit that's anything over thirty-five gallons permitted is still having to have a meter. We still read the meters or get them to read the meters so we know what total production is, because that's how we actually can do management. When we know how much is being pumped, we can see the effect of pumping, we know what, you know, what to project out through our groundwater modeling. So it's still important that we meter and get that information, but we won't be collecting fees in 2025 based on metered production. It'll be on permitted, permitted amounts, okay? Total exempt wells for the year was two hundred and sixty-nine, eighty-one of them being a domestic livestock well, which is something thirty-five gallons per minute or less, and used for a domestic or livestock purpose, eighty-one of those in Brazos, one hundred and sixty-three of those in Robertson, and the twenty-five oil and gas or rig supply wells, mostly that's us finding wells that have never been declared from as far back as the eighties and nineties. When we come across a well and it's still a rig, used for rig supply purpose, we go ahead and register that well, put it in the database. So many people, I'll say this for the public, there are so many people that believe that if they tell us they have a water well, that we're going to come put a meter on it, and we're going to tell them how much they can pump, and when they can pump, and they're going to charge, be charged for it, which is probably the largest myth that there ever was. And the only way that I am able, as a groundwater district manager, to protect someone's property rights properly is to know that they have a well. And if I know that they have a well, I can get them on the map and protect them by well spacing, that type of thing. So it's greatly appreciated if people get that information out, that don't be afraid of the groundwater district, because I am not going to come put a meter on your well. It's not going to happen, not on my shift, okay? All right, go ahead and go to the next. All right, here's our total wells by category as of the end of last year, nearly five thousand exempt wells, thirteen hundred and thirty-eight rig supply wells for oil and gas purposes. We do have six hundred and eleven historic use permits, and four hundred and eighty-two drilling operating permits, which means those are wells that were, just an operating permit is one that the well's already drilled for, the groundwater district was confirmed, but they've come in since that time, and they've said, we'd like to produce our well. That goes under the operating. The drilling operating is one that we've never drilled a well here, we want to come in and drill a well. They're all end up being operating permits. And so for a total number of seven, nearly seventy-four hundred wells, and I can tell you, there's likely between three and four thousand wells that are out there that we simply don't know about. So the more we know, the better we're able to manage. All right, go ahead. We're in the middle of the DFC planning process, desired future conditions, and I can't stress to the public, I can't stress to you guys, or the City of Bryan, or City of Bryan College Station, Texas A&amp;M, or, or any of the entities in Robertson County, the importance of the desired future condition planning process. And that's simply, a quick overview of that is what does my board of eight board members, four of which are Rob, are Brazos County, four of which are Robertson County, what do they want the aquifers to look like fifty years from now? We're now planning for 2080, okay? And there's been a lot of concern about the availability of water from the Simsboro aquifer in 2070. There's been a lot of talk about that. I can tell you, it is my job, and it is my board's job, to direct me to make sure that when we get to what has been set as the desired future condition of any of the aquifers, the dreaded word "curtailment" comes up. Curtailment meaning basically it's going to be a cap on the amount of water that can actually be produced from the aquifer, and that's a real concern. That's a real concern for cities. It's a real concern for, for, for everyone, okay? So everybody needs to be paying attention to the desired future conditions that are being set, because we don't set those by ourselves. We have to hold hands with four other groundwater districts that sit over the very same aquifers, and we all have to come to an agreement as to what those desired futures going, conditions is going to look like in 2080, and we have to have four of those five groundwater districts to agree, okay? So it is very important to understand, my job, our job, is not only to protect the property rights of owners, landowners in Brazos and Robertson County, and the assets that they have in groundwater, but it's to preserve, conserve, and protect the aquifers, okay? We're, we're the ones that actually determine when harm may or not, may not be occurring to an aquifer, all right? We're currently off into round four of this, of the DFC planning process. We have to have our proposed initial DFCs done by May the first of next year, and then at that point, it will be out for ninety days for public comment, public input. Public input is at all times. We continuously are taking input. We encourage the public to come to our meetings that we have. Right now, they're happening about every two months. It happened in Milano. It's always up on our website, when and where are things going to be. So it's, if you've got things to say and, and that are important and, and would add to the process, you need to come be involved. And then after we get the ninety days of hearings, and we take everyone's comments that have either been given to us verbally or given to us written, and then we see if there's something that we can do to incorporate that into what we believe that the desired future conditions need to be, okay? Go ahead. All right, this is important, so everybody take note, please. We have to comply with the desired future conditions. They, they were set five, four years ago. We've got to comply with those. We cannot let our artesian head, so everybody understands, these aquifers, when you, they're not, it's not a water table. This is, you don't just drill down, all of a sudden there's water, it's, it's there. Our, our aquifer, seven aquifers are under pressure. You drill down into the aquifer, and water comes up towards land surface, and you are pumping your wells off of the artesian pressure. The aquifers, my job is to make sure they stays fully saturated into perpetuity, that we never drain an aquifer, okay? So looking here at our desired future conditions, so the middle column is the amount of artesian head, that pressure that I was talking about? How much we will allow, which, how much has been agreed to by the five groundwater districts for each of the five areas. Ours are different from theirs, it's just because the aquifer is different in places, okay? That's the allowable amount of artesian reduction that we can have out to year 2070. So I'm going to pick on the Simsboro, and it's two hundred and sixty-two feet. So in year 2000, the water level was here, and in, hang on just one moment, I apologize. Okay? In year 2000, our, our water level was zero. That's where we started at, zero, okay? We have now law, we can go down in, by year 2070, to two hundred and sixty-two feet of artesian reduction. By year 2070, we've lost sixty-six feet in twenty-four years, sixty-six feet. So we've lost about a quarter of the artesian head as we move off, and this is very normal. It's very normal, because not only has Bryan College Station, A&amp;M, this area been using Simsboro water for a long time, now we've picked up and we have Vista Ridge over on the western side of Robertson County sending water into San Antonio, and when they've turned those pumps on, they're never turn them off. They never turn them off. They send fifty thousand acre-feet of water to San Antonio per year, and that's all well and good, there's nothing wrong with that. That causes an effect here, and we've seen the Bryan College Station area, the artesian reduction right here has been between thirty and forty feet of artesian reduction since the year 2020, okay? That's going to continue to happen. It's just the way it is. We are interconnected. They pump, it affects us. We pump, it affects them. People up in the north pumping affect down here, Bryan College Station is affecting them, okay? So we, that's why we have to have the regional DFC process, so that we can all hold hands and figure out how the best manage what we have. All right, so we've All right, so we've lost, we've lowered the artesian head about twenty-five percent. Go ahead and go to the next. So the, on the left-hand side, that is what it looks like, just a decline from year 2000 to year 27, and a, and just a straight line, if it were no ups and downs on pumping, okay? All right, go ahead and go to the next slide because it's a little bigger. This is what has actually happened in Brazos and Robertson County, within our district. So it starts in year 2000, we pick it up in 2017, and we've lost about twenty-eight feet of artesian head, as an average, across the entire district. That's from wells here in Brazos County that are pumping along OSR, all the way up to wells that are out to the east of Bremont, okay? We have twelve specifically cited wells that we use as our desired future condition wells that tell us airily what's happening. So it's an average across that district. So you go along 2017 all the way out to 2021, and you see a very slow decline, and that's just because of normal pumping, normal things going on. I told you that Vista Ridge began pumping in 2020, in April of 2020, they turned on all their pumps and they started rolling and they, by the time, we didn't see any real effect in 2021. It took time for that, the pressure, for that cone of depression to be pushing out towards us, okay? But look what happened in 2022. We went, the decline began, and that was solely, that wasn't solely from Vista Ridge. What else happened in 2022? We had one of the worst summers that we've ever had. Everybody down here was keeping their yards green, good for you. So were the farmers, they were trying to keep all their crops going. So we had a real large, heavy pumping year, so we started that, we had a real serious decline that year. And then you had 2022 into 2023, it continues to go down. You see that it's tipped back up just a little bit because last year, y'all didn't use near and thus water, neither did, neither did the farmers out in Robertson County, but they were still using water in San Antonio, okay? So you're still going to have that decline. We have to comply with the DFCs. We have triggering levels. When we get to sixty-five percent of the DFC, whatever it might be set at the time, that's our trigger level one, and we will get the public together, we will get everyone together and go, "Okay, here's where we are at this time, are there any management strategies that we need to change or any things that we need to implement? Do we need to look at management zones?" There won't be any curtailment at sixty-five percent. At eighty percent, that's trigger level two, and it's the same thing, we continue to look very closely at what's going on and are there things that we can be doing right now to implement that we would otherwise not have to do? When we get to ninety percent, we never make it to a hundred percent of the DFC because we can't exceed the DFC by statute. We can't exceed the two sixty-two. We stop at ninety percent, and that's where curtailment comes, and that's where the, that's where everybody's gut kind of turns. Because it's important to know that curtailment is real, will be real at some point in time, but it's all dependent on the DFC, that desired future condition. So everybody needs to keep that in mind. That's really important to understand. We just didn't come up with two hundred and sixty-two feet of artesian reduction, okay? As a matter of fact, my board is in the process of determining exactly what do we want it to look like in 2080 because we're in this process, so. Okay, probably enough on that. We're able to know what's happening in an aquifer because we monitor a copious number. We're doing two hundred and twenty-three wells in our seven, eight aquifers every year with a total of five hundred and forty-two water level measurements to know exactly what the response from pumping is. And that doesn't count the fifty to seventy-five wells that we have up in the Calvert area, the Hearn area, where we know that there's going to be serious amount of Simsboro pumping if and when a transport permit is in place. So we probably do a thousand measurements a year. We know what's happening in the aquifers. If somebody needs to know what's happening in their wells, they just need to come to us because we are, we are the authority on it, okay? I'm not bragging, I'm just stating facts. Okay, next. Here's our current fee structure, going to change, it's already changed, you can see what the rates are. Okay, go ahead. We educate, we try to help people to understand what a, what an aquifer is and how it works and why. I found it's difficult for adults to grasp it because they simply already have in their mind what's all going on. And it's hard to change as an adult. That's why we spend our time in fourth grades, fifth grade, and seventh grades in teaching those kids what it really is, what the truth is, okay? And we do, we do the best job in the state of Texas, there's no doubt about it. Nobody even attempts to get to six thousand kids a year in person, eyeball to eyeball. They do not even attempt to do that. Okay, go ahead. Our management plan, it's online, you should read it. If it's important to you, you should read it. It tells you how we're going to get to where we are in 2080, okay? It's going to tell you what our strategies are, and we just had our last one, the one that we're currently under, was recently and finally approved in late December of 2023. Last slide, legal affairs. We have legal affairs going on. April the thirtieth, May first, and into May second, we have a district court trial. It's A&amp;M System versus Groundwater District with a writ of mandamus to set contested case hearings on thirty-two production permits and one transport permit. It is set for trial, and the question there is, was A&amp;M's request for the contested case hearing, was it proper? So that's, that's what we have before Judge Wise on April the thirtieth. We currently have seven transport permits that are set to be heard at the State Office of Administrative Hearings, October the twentieth through the twenty-third, and we'll see if that holds or not. And then the last one on the bottom, Fazino Investments LP versus the Groundwater District. We, in early January, were sued for federal takings challenging an amendment to our district rules on spacing between wells. They said that that was, because we further spaced out from, on Simsboro wells than what they were, that that was a, they hold, they believe that that was a takings and would like for the district judge, the federal district judge in Waco to hear that and move forward. So we're, we're into that. I know too much about legal stuff, and now, next slide. Anybody got any questions? That was way too much, Duane.
You did a great job, Alan.
I have just one question. So when I'm out in the community, talking to residents and talking about, when I'm out in, oh, I thought I could talk her out. When I'm out in the community, talking to constituents and in different groups, you know, we talk, I talk about with all of the different things that are going on, I talk about the growth of the county. And so we talk about, you know, resources and infrastructure, and the question always comes up because this, number one, the state of Texas, the population growth is exploding. With that, so is Brazos County. I mean, I'm saying ours is exploding in terms of the whole state, but there, people are moving to Texas, they're moving to Brazos Valley, Brazos County. And so the concern is sort of like, okay, we want our county to stay the same, but with that comes use of resources such as water. And you're right, there's so many articles, I mean, just seeing it everywhere, about water being the new oil. With what you're telling us, with all of the usage of the water that is not only for Brazos County or Brazos Valley, but you know, you sound like you're saying San Antonio, do we need to be concerned about the growth, the population growth that is going to impact this precious resource?
You should always be paying attention to it. Our job's to make sure there's going to be water here forever, that's our job. Is the water going to remain to be, remain at the current price that it is today? The answer is no. Water is going to get higher and higher over time. That's just, that's just a given. Are there avenues for entities to make sure that they're going to have enough water to do what they need to do in year 2080? Absolutely. There are, there are definitely avenues for that. Groundwater District owns no water. We own no water. People think we own the water. We don't own anything. We just regulate the property rights of landowners. That's all we do is, so Brown College Station own land, they own water. Mr. Fazino, he owns land, he owns water. We regulate that and make sure that everybody's going to be able to share in that resource, okay? Yes, are the resources, are the resources going to become more expensive? Yes, they are. Yes, ma'am, they certainly are. I, I told the City of College Station some years ago, I sleep really well at night. They asked me, so what, what keeps you up at night about this? And I said, "Nothing keeps me up. I'm a dead sleeper." I'm not, because I'm the regulator, and regulator says, "When I get to two sixty-two, we're curtailling," okay? The, your job in Brazos County, the entities in Brazos County, the entities in Robertson County, need to be planning for 2080 and where are they going to get their water and how they're going to do to meet their need.
Some kind of tongue-in-cheek, as you talk about planning, you talked about those of us who like to water our lawns, so do we need to start thinking about zero scape sort of being Arizona of?
You know, I'm not going to go that far. I don't have my bulletproof vest on, do I?
I got you, I got you, I got you.
But I'll say that if it fits, if it fits, wear it.
Right. Well, I grew up in West Texas, so we didn't have a lot of trees and grass, so, you know, it looks like a desert out in Midland.
And, and, you know, I would say for those, the people that are watering lawns, just don't overwater. Use reason about what you're doing, so. But you're always going to have water here. You're not going to run out of water. It's going to be more expensive over time. Everybody needs to start wearing that because it just is.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? I wore you all out, didn't I?
Lot of information.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you all.
You have great knowledge, and I'm glad you came in and shared it. Okay, we will consider to take action on agenda items four through twenty, but I'm going to go out of order, and I want to look at number twenty-one, which is an acknowledgement of Judge Dana Zachary as recipient of Judge's award for the 2025 Annual Texas Association of Specialty Courts Conference. There she is. Dana is an extremely busy judge, and I know she's got people over there waiting, and I want to bring you, I mean, Dana is a magistrate, and I guess when you came in, you were doing felony and misdemeanors for-
And juvenile.
And juvenile. And then the burden got so big that I think the felonies maybe got carved off, and then somewhere along the line, you picked up specialty court.
Yes.
And you began to do those, and I know you do a great job of trying to get those folks who have, I know it was drug court for a long time is what they called it, it's specialty court now because you deal with other things too, but you were able to get people through that process of learning how to stay off of drugs and trying to keep them off drugs, and I think you have been very successful at it and you're very innovative. And I, and so I see here you've got an award.
I did.
So, share with us.
It was the Judge Cruzeau Award.
Turn the mic down to-
It was the Judge Cruzeau Award. Apparently, my team nominated me for the award, and it was a surprise and an honor for, it was for the Texas Association of Specialty Courts. And I'm as good as my team is, and I have a wonderful team, and they're here to support me today as well. And I think that we have one of the best specialty courts in the state of Texas.
Very exciting, and I know well deserved.
Thank you, thank you.
So, why don't we take a picture?
Staff, come on up, everybody come up.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
This is all staff, oh, great.
This is my team, this is Amy Brown, she's the treatment provider. Jeff Reeves helps us. He's under law enforcement. Bobby Baker is the probation officer, Billy Brown is a probation officer, and this is Lisa Paradas, Miguel Cantu, and Waylon Van Estes.
She should come down here.
You guys are really-
Sure, yeah.
All right. Okay, ready, one, two, three. Can we do one more? Thank you.
Now, we will move back up and consider to take action on agenda items four through twenty. Number four is approximation twenty-five dash zero seventeen, proclaiming the month of April as Child Abuse Awareness Prevention Month.
Please approve.
Second.
Most made seconded. Is there somebody here to accept that? Child Abuse and Awareness Prevention Month, whereas thousands of cases of child abuse and neglect are confirmed in Texas, and whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solutions depends on involvement among people, and whereas communities must make every effort to promote the program that benefits children and their families, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed before partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and business community, now therefore be it proclaimed that the month of April 2025 is Child Abuse Awareness Prevention Month. In Brazos County, we urge all citizens to work together to help reduce child abuse and neglect significantly in the years to come, proclaim this first day of April 2025.
All right, come on, Allison, just speak.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Allison Prince, I'm the Director of Development with Scotty's House, the Child Advocacy Center here for the Brazos Valley. I was not prepared to speak today, so I would just want to say thank you to the court for honoring Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. This is an action that everybody can take to help prevent child abuse in our community. Unfortunately, child abuse happens, even in our wonderful community, but there's amazing organizations like Scotty's House that are working diligently every day to help treat children that have experienced child abuse and their family members, as well as help prevent child abuse. The community, as well as all of you, are invited tomorrow at noon to a child abuse awareness ceremony. It will be held at noon at the new Blinn Administration Building on the corner of Villa Maria and Nash. We will have a name reading where we will read honorary names of every child that's been a confirmed victim of child abuse in 2024. It's a really special- Um, it's a really special ceremony, it takes about an hour and then we'll have a light lunch afterwards and the entire community is, is welcome to come out and help, uh, stand in honor of those children, um, because we all have a role in helping prevent child abuse, so, thank you guys.
All right, Allison. Come on up, take pictures. Do you, do you have anybody here? Anybody else? Should be in the picture.
Uh, is what's missing?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Allison.
Thank you.
Did we vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Uh, number five is approval requested from the Veteran Service Officer for acceptance of four $25 Walmart gift cards to be distributed to veterans in the need of assistance.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number six is approval requested from Constable Precinct Three to accept, uh, 25 TXE 056 NRA Foundation Grant, $2,988.45 for training and ammunition. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number seven is approval of the following items as they relate to reserved spaces at the Roy Kelly Parking Garage. Move for approval, items A through D?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion, and we have, uh, Victoria Salin wants to say, wants to speak.
Morning, thanks for your time. My name's Victoria-
You pull that down.
Morning, thanks for your time. I'm Victoria Salin. My comments are not for or against this particular contract, but I just want to point out in relation to the workshop that we had today, if the county wishes to model its cost-effectiveness analysis on, um, the Department of Government Efficiency and the federal government, the process that they have used included cutting contracts arbitrarily and-
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but when you address an agenda item, you're required to address the agenda item. You have to speak on the item that's up before the court.
So you're not going to allow me to speak?
No, you can speak if you address, if you signed up to speak on an agenda item, you're required to speak on that agenda item.
Okay.
If you want to make a general comment, you do that at the beginning of Commissioner's Court when everybody has a chance to sign up and talk.
I see.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Judge, the only, the only problem I have with this is you or any of us up here or anybody in the audience, if you go over there to our parking garage Monday through Friday and you're there from eight o'clock in the morning until five o'clock at night, you're going to pay eight bucks. Is that correct? You're going to pay eight dollars to park there. But if you have reserved lease space, which are the best spaces because you just pull right in, you just walk right out the door across to the courthouse, you're only going to pay $2.50 a day and that to me seems like highway robbery. So what I would like for us to do at the, at, when, when these leases are up, I'd like for us to be able to renegotiate them because $2.50 a day just isn't right for, for a premium reserved space in our parking garage. And I don't disagree, it, but these contracts are in place and so I, you're right, when these leases end, we'll, the court will deal with it at that time.
Yes, sir. I think the, I think our counselor is fixing to get after me for something. No, okay.
Okay. You get free. So, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number eight, approval of contract 25 dash 110's classification software for Brazos County Detention Center with the Quivavant.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number nine is approval amendment number one for contract 25 dash 113 R for psychological evaluations of applicants for the Brazos County Sheriff's Office with Dr. Roy Lupnus-
Lupnus.
Lupnus, okay. Uh, PhD, increase in fees will result in additional requirements imposed by Texas Commission on Law Enforcement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion.
Dr. Lupnus has been here since Moby Dick was a minnow, so I'm, I'm glad to see, I'm glad to see he's still, still around.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 10 is approval acceptance of Winding Creek Estates, uh, Phase Four subdivision roads and ru- uh, roadway drainage structures into the Brazos County Road Maintenance System. Structures are in compliance with the Brazos County Subdivision Regulation sites located Precinct One.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 11 is approval of acceptance of Winding Creek Estates, Phase Five, roads and roadway drainage structures in Brazos County Road Maintenance System. Structures are in compliance with the Sub- Brazos County Subdivision Regulation sites located Precinct One.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 13 is approval of Treasurer's Report-
Twelve.
Uh, excuse me, excuse me. Number 12 is consider and take action on College Station Utilities Permit to construct roadboard 400 feet of trenching for North Dowling Road. Project will also attach fiber optic cable to existing power poles on North Dowling Road and Walnut Road with air crossing on the Ashley Lane and Walnut Road to improve communications with lift stations sites located Precinct One.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 13 is approval of Treasurer's Report for January 2025.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 14 is tax refund application for the following.
Move for approval, items A through G?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 15 is Commissioner's Court Minutes for the following dates.
Move for approval, items A through F?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 16 is budget amendments FY 2425, budget amendments 24 dash 01 through 24 dash 04.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 17 is personnel change status.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 18 is payment of claims, uh, claims be paid by Brazos County, approval of payment of claims 820-8750 through 820-9-8923 and, uh, claim number 920-3875 through claim number 920-3923.
Move to approve items A and B?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. We're going to skip down to an acknowledgement of the Brazos County Independent Auditor's, uh, and annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended September 30, 2024. Twenty-three is an acknowledgement of FY 2425 budget to actuals by fund as of March 26, 2025. Uh, number 23, I think that was, is, uh, acknowledgement of FY 2425 contingency to budget to actuals by fund as of March 26, 2025. Number 24 is, uh, Juvenile Director's Report on Detention Population and, uh, Lynn is not here this morning, uh, uh, one of the employees, Deputy Director Joel Himes passed away, uh, this weekend, uh, I mean, I, it's just hard to believe that he's gone, but, um, we had a juvenile board meeting last Friday and, and he was there and I got to talk to him briefly, but, uh, you just, you know, it just tells us how short life can be. Uh, he was well respected, a great guy and he's going to be missed out there, so, uh, Lynn is not here this morning, so we won't have a report for juvenile. Uh, next one is Sheriff's Report on In- Inmate Population. Sheriff.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. 713 this morning, 629 men, 84 women and 43 on electronic monitoring.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Number 26 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Judge, I thought, um, I'd mentioned that, uh, that May one Chamber event where the county and the two cities will come together and meet with businesses and talk about the importance of trying to do business with the county and the two cities. I don't know if that, if we need to discuss that more at a later date or not.
Okay. I guess we'll talk Glenn and see what his thoughts are too.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If there's no further, uh, announcements, we'll move back up to nine, number 19 and convene an executive session pursuant to the following. A is Texas Government Code 551.071 to consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation and/or settlement offer and B will be Texas Government Code 551.0725 to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated in council, I think.
And Judge, I submitted my letter with my determination that negotiating and open would be detrimental to the position of the county. Ask you to approve this unanimously.
Okay. We need a motion and a second. Motion to approve?
Okay.
Motion made seconded. It needs to be a unanimous vote to do that, so all in favor, raise your right hand.
She's still in training.
And there's none opposed, it's unanimous. Okay, so we're in, in the, A is, we'll take it first and we need, uh, Bruce, Allison, Nina, Ed, Trevor and Amy Emerson and if she's got any, uh, other staff with her, any of those that need to come in, I think that's all we need in there and then, uh, when we go to B, we'll add audited office to it and, and then of course the attorneys from out of council will be leaving out and the time is 11:01.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're coming out of executive session. It's 11:50. There is no action to be taken, so the next item is to adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.